Father, the opportunity that we have tonight to represent the people of this county to be able to discuss the affairs and hopefully Father, we approach it in a manner that is open-minded, that we understand the challenge that's been given to us by our constituents to do those things in accordance that would make things in county, county be in a manner that would be acceptable to them and would make this county, the county be even better than it is up to this point in time. Father, just speak with each of us tonight, continue to bless us. We know all good and good for you. In Christ's name, pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Neil Floyd, here.
Russell Ray.
Here.
Jorge Gannon.
Here.
Karen Ashen.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Greg Vehicle.
Here.
Greg Braden.
Here.
Ray Gannon.
Here.
And then four, here.
And Ronnie Haddish.
Here.
Next out of number ten, number five, a grade approval of prior maintenance.
Almost voted approved, that's written.
Almost approved, grades of men, that's that.
Just say.
That's great.
All right.
I'll talk.
Now comes the number six, only again as further comment period, fifteen of men who will open up for way forward for further comment. Anybody over here? Anybody? Anybody here? About that. Moving on, out of number seven, proof notaries, we've got one notary for approval of Gina Anne Mitchell. No relation, I'd say she's late. Move through, move through circuit at seven minutes.
Forty?
My own favor.
Ah.
I'll talk.
Out of take out number ten, number eight, at a safety center, Mark Oliver with us, would like to address the issues, or no need.
Hey, make sure, hey, I've asked that I could address you all twice a year. Once before I go into session and once when we come out. And we're about to go back into session in January, so I just wanted to see if there was anything as, as the commissioners, as the county, that you're hoping that I can be carrying, looking forward to do either private acts or whatever, so I can make sure I'm representing you. So this is the time that I'm just going to report back to y'all and take, take whatever you do out from before now. You did assign me one piece of, last time I was here, and you said you wanted me to kind of look at, see how everybody in the courthouse is actually paid, if there's rates that goes through and such. And I met with Charlie Curtis, and we're trying to work on different options that, that we're looking at, that we could possibly introduce that in January. But that's the only thing that I have on my plate from, from y'all at this point. But I'm here just to, to be here as your eyes, ears, and lights on the Capitol. So is there anything that I need to know?
You know, I was just wondering if you can keep your eyes, ears open for any kind of grants that might be available for county counties. We have a jail project that's coming up. I have no idea if there's ever anything out there for bail projects. You know, that's a huge item that's coming up for our counties that really needs some help and financing.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any legislation out there that can benefit small counties like us, or even if there's legislation that'll be coming up that could be harmful to us. If you can, you know, keep your eyes open for that and kind of let us know so we would be aware of such legislation and certainly any kind of grants that could be available for our schools.
Alright, so what I'm here is, we look up the grants that are available for the county, make sure we don't spend any money that's going to cost you guys or hurt. But I will tell you the one thing that I think that this governor wants to do, and we should be watching at this here, is to get money to you and to the schools, both in health and in education. Those two things, priorities that he has. So I think we'll be watching the world Tennessee get a little bit more money this year. But I'll be watching for extra grants as well.
Mick T. Walker, she's been back and forth, I think, a little bit. She's been on the whole thing with ROTC guys, we don't want to talk about. And Hope Scholarship.
Okay, so I did try and run a bill a few years ago for the ROTC, but at that point, the current commissioner of education was not in favor of doing anything with it, and it kind of died. There was another bill that was ran, I just don't remember.
This has to do, I think, with, they get a certain amount of credits toward their Hope Scholarship, but they, because they're in some kind of training, they actually run out of money factory than a normal person, and they're actually in the process of going into their military. So they, she was kind of hoping that there was something that would be done to allow him to continue, I think.
Yes, when it goes into ROTC, they make.
To clarify, the required requirement is roughly 130 hours, and that's all Tennessee Hope Scholarship covers. You get a commission, you normally end up taking about 125. And so that's what he was trying to say. Basically, Hope Scholarship runs out because you completed all your normal work degree, but in order to get the commission, you have to do an additional coursework. And that's what Hope Scholarship is covering. So then again, that's all the individuals paid for that roughly 18 to 25 hours. Depends on where they start, how much basic training they've had, how much prior enrollment they have, what they enter the ROTC. That's really what I think are issues. It's like I said, 130 hours for roughly back and forth degree, you gotta have back and forth degree, which you actually also have to have an additional 18 to 26 hours to get ROTC commission. That's what, that's what the students are having to perform. Statewide, they're.
Yeah, it's not just those. No, it, it was. And, and we did try and do something, but it's been, it's been six years ago, I just don't recall what, but it was a different commissioner at that point. He wasn't interested in making any changes, so it never went anywhere. But I can circle back to, to Mitzi and.
Well, you definitely do, I mean, I think see, you know, guys that are neck out, hope that are trying to get in the military that are missing out, or, or something's wrong with the system where it's charging them when somebody else probably wouldn't be charged. And I don't know enough about it to completely articulate it very well, but I just know that those guys are going into certain country and we're actually making them pay basically when we're letting others not.
Okay, yeah, I, I will circle back and let you see what that is.
I was, I had exactly that, what you're saying, except for.
Okay, right.
And I may have misunderstood this, but if I heard correctly on the news first of this week, not apart last week, that the governor or the whoever's over the budget policy for the state was asking all departments to submit numbers representing a 1% decrease for all departments?
Yes.
So that's concerning, of course, if the state's looking to cut back. I don't know if it's reality, if what's going to end up being, or if that's just a suggestion, or to look at the numbers just to look and see what. But if the state's cutting, then of course that normally directly flow down to the counties to, to fill that glut of cuts. So, as already been mentioned by Commissioner Floyd, other was right on the table. A county like us to, to keep putting more on our table for us to pick up the tab, just, just make sure what the word is coming.
Sure. So, every year for, since I've been there, I think Governor Haslam was actually asking for three to four percent cuts every single year, and asking every single department to come up with that. If there was going to be a cut, what would it be? And that way, they were going to be able to analyze and say, if the department, if they had to do something, what would it look like? And do we really need to keep doing that or not? And so Governor Lee's asking for them to do the same basic thing, come up in this case, he's saying, if you had a couple one percent, what would that one percent be? And they're doing that, but they've done it for years in, in Tennessee. So every single state department has to say, we've got to justify it every hour. Just because we got it last year doesn't mean we should get the same amount this year. If you can't justify it, we're going to readjust it and spend it somewhere else. Okay? Alright. Guys, I appreciate it. I am here to represent you all. Please call me if I can do anything else. I'll get back to Mitzi, I'll be watching for that as well. Ronnie, I will make sure that if something's being cut up there, we know about it, okay? But the state at this point, I don't think that there was anything that we, he's intending to cut it, but he is asking every department to, to do that across the board, so it's not one department over another.
It, it just on my mind, because not we're going to be discussing the county now having to pick up 50% of the cost of the monitoring devices, the legal system, equiverses, those kind of things. And that's something that's new for us. It's always been paid 100% of the state. So now we're at, where we ask to pick up 50% of our costs. So it's those kind of things that trickle down. And again, you know, buck stops here. But yet, you know, how does it happen? How does it happen? States have enormous reserves that circulate, we're set here, you know, trying to find that next pin. But also.
Let's just on my mind, that's. Sure, sure. I, but I will look at that, because I was not aware if there was something being sent to you all, that you've got to pick up more of the expenses.
Yeah, 50%.
As for image people that come in front of court and like, say for example, have a DUI, instead of putting them in jail, they could do the monitoring. They used to pay for 100% of that monitoring, now they're only paying for half, so the county has to pick up the other half, or otherwise, we can't participate in the program. If you can't participate in the program, that means you go to jail. I believe that costs us more money than it would if we.
But, so the jail would have been more cost than the monitor?
That's correct.
Alright, so.
The state was paying 100%, now they're only paying half. On certain things, certain things that pay 100%.
Alright, but if we didn't have that, would they be in jail? Would they be in court sort of?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is a bigger cost, this monitoring.
Okay.
The other thing, states, it's still the 100% level if you're locking the locks.
Yeah.
But otherwise, you pay, it's $100 per item, per person a month. $200 per item, per person, per month. So 50% of that's kind of bucks a month, per item, per person. If you can't participate, you're not picking up 10.
Okay, and that's needed here. Okay, alright. I, I will look at that and get back to you on that one as well. Alright. Guys, I appreciate your time. Thank you also very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Number nine, it's only again the deal, Lancaster and Andy Lake, the graduate major regarding jail problems.
Gotcha. I'm Andy Lake. First of all, I want to express my appreciation, address the board, we're Southville. This is Jim, Jim's our architect of record, our senior architect. Have good pleasure of meeting you Sheriff on a couple of occasions, Mr. Bush on a couple of occasions. I'm going to keep my comments very brief. You've got a good audience here tonight. It's good to see such participation from the people of the county here. We do one thing and one thing other. We build county jails. This is all we do. This is all we've done for 21, 22 years. We are responsible for over 15,000 beds in five southern states. We're a team comprised of an architectural firm, Jim's going to elaborate on this, called Spirit Architecture and Smith Doyle Construction. We've been working together, designing and doing construction management of county jails, and again, nothing else. We don't do state prisons, we don't do federal penitentiaries, we don't do municipal jails. All we do are county jails. You will find other firms, other organizations, whether they're construction management companies, architectural companies, that do other things, schools, churches, office buildings. We don't do that. We focus on one thing, which is county jails. We know and we understand the needs of law enforcement, we understand the budgetary strengths the county has, we try to help bring those, bring those two together. We understand jail design, we understand specialties of jail design, which is security doors, the electronic systems, line of sight, the safety of their inmates, the safety of their officers, the safety of the community. All these things, with many, many others come into play in our process of designing and constructing county jails. As I said, I'm going to be very brief. I'm going to turn this over to Jim. He's got about 18 minute, if we may turn it to a 15 minute presentation for the sake of time. So Jim, you've done before.
I'm going to show you, I'm going to make it relatively quick. And the reason I'll do it is because from what I understand, this is something you're just now imparting on, something that you're just now looking at. So what I'll do is sort of take a light to cut through these slides at such time where you're really ready to sit down and you have a committee or something to really look at the details, and we can come back and spend a lot more time on some of the details of these slides. So let me just run through it real quick. You see two logos up here? That's two parts of the team, as Andy mentioned, Smith Doyle Construction, that's construction manager, and then Spirit Architecture, that's my group. We're different, as Andy mentioned. We call ourselves that Southville team, just for ease of memory. Probably if we center around a piece of paper, you have trouble writing two things I showed you previously. So those SB guys and Southville guys, as Andy says, we specialize in county jails. We've been doing this for 22 years as a team. I've been designing jail facilities for over 30, but our Southville team has been together for 22 years, and we've never gone over budget. In Tennessee, the typical process is that the architect and construction manager, or RQ process, done separately. And the reason is, is because there's some differences in how you acquire those members. But we talk about ourselves as a team, because most places we work, we do work as a team. We just want to recognize that that process usually happens in two parts in Tennessee, as far as selection. We've been at it 22 years. This is just a simple slide showing you where we've worked. Won't spend a lot of time going into it again. I'm just going to cut through these lightly, given this is a sort of early discussion. We've done almost half a billion dollars worth of, what I'm proud to say, of country jails. Never been out of budget, as I mentioned, and in our process, when we put together a budget, all savings in that budget, 100% stays with the owner. Sometimes it's shared by other group. We don't want to do that. You keep 100%. We want to keep that simple. That's been in history. You'll find 30 or 40 references in the back of the packet you've been given, Paul Manassas. In our process, the construction manager, and this is a key point, we'll come back to it some other times if you're interested, construction manager replaces the general contractor. If that pie you see is a, say a bid on a million dollar health department building, there's going to be a sliver of it, a piece of it, that's probably an overhead for that general contractor, somewhere, oh, neighborhood 10, 15%. In our process, that's removed, goes away, and the construction manager role replaces the general contractor. So again, if we get back to our time, we're not getting into details, we could talk about this further. The other part of our process is that we bid everything 100%, what I call the hitting of the nails, if you will, locally. Try to get as much local concrete people, plumbers, whatever we can get who are qualified, can bond the projects, we try to bid it local. Historically, we find about 75 to 80% stays either in the county or the surrounding counties, depending on how large you are. There are certain things, security electronics, detention doors, you're just not going to get in areas. So again, it's not a pretty good bid, stays in the area. This is sort of generally what you face. You've got a relatively small jail compared to 2,000 bed prison. There's not anyone, or there's not many people out there offering the comprehensive services, working as a unit. So you can hire a planner, a designer, and go out and low bid it, and everyone is from different places. They may or may not have worked together. And then later, when you need maintenance, you're kind of left on your own. This was sort of our idea 22 years ago. Needs a planning help, we've done some of that. As a designer, we talked to people on the construction manager's side, the guy in field, he knows what a seven inch detention mobile lock is. It's not something new to him. And he, he's there on the job site all day, every day, and he can help, say the local mechanical contractor who's done other kinds of buildings, who's not done a jail, jail is a special animal. So before, during, and after, you'll have issues. You'll have issues with our projects. We get calls from people we've worked for 10 years ago. We've got problems with our electronics, our doors, other things. Where can we get one phone number? And generally, we know who to call because we're doing it, we're still doing it. We have jail projects going right now. I'm not going to dwell on these. These are all jail projects. There's no school projects in here, there's no road projects, there's no health departments, there's no McDonald's. This is all county level experience. We've got a lot of experience. One key thing, and a comment, Sheriff, you're, you're the choir here. The cost of your building is not, or the cost of your jail's not in your building. It's not the bricks and mortar. As expensive as that is, that's not where your dollars are at. In a typical 30-year life cycle of a jail, the last 30 years of the jail you just built, less than 20% of that cost is actually in the bricks and mortar. Less than 20%. And a great majority of that 80% is staffing. Those are real dollars that you spend every day. If I've got to have somebody in my seat seven days a week, 24 hours a day, it's going to take roughly five people, and it's probably $150,000 to $200,000 worth of salaries, and that's forever. Construction note, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, you will finish that. But if you're not emphasizing, focusing on minimizing staff and making that staff efficient, this cost goes on forever. And again, we can get into these details more. So you want to make sure that whoever you're working with understands where your real money is spent. It's that staffing. And I, I notice, again, Sheriff's Choir. So that's going to affect the design. Everything in the design of the jail's got nothing to do with the pretty elevation on the front. It's got to do with that staffing, and what we call the apple pie concept, the ability to maximize the number of inmates we can control from a single point. So if you imagine an apple pie, say you're in the middle of the apple pie, controlling into the different pie slices, or variations of that, doesn't have to be round, and the whole pie doesn't have to be built at once. Shape matters because of line of sight, and affects staffing ratios, and depending when people like Bob Bass and others come to look at jails, they're looking at things like that. What I'll do now is, I'm just going to run through quickly some jails, but then I'm going to end with just a little two-minute video, and then we'll be done. Different jails from different places, at different sizes. 50-bed design down in Mississippi, 160-bed in Fayette County, Alabama, the concept that we did, 166-bed in Oklahoma. And if you'll notice, over there on the right, you see the apple pie. It happens to be square, the control point in the middle, looking into the pie slices. You'll see variations of that in each one of these. This is down Louisiana. You see the pie over here in the upper left, it's not colored in. In this case, the outside of the pie is octagonal, and it has to do with the size of the county and the number of inmates they want to control from one point. But again, the base concept is the same one, apple pie, control point in the middle. Another one, 200 beds, 300 beds, 130 beds. A justice center has courts in it, Brownsville, Tennessee, happens to be the, an old Walmart that was converted. First Walmart east of Mississippi. Then we added the apple pies, you see. Marshall County, 300 beds. Robinson County, stacked, 600 beds on a tight site. This is the one I'm going to show you, just a short video, and we'll be done. I'll turn it back to Andy. This is Lawrence County, about 100 beds. And if you'll notice, there's a half apple pie appearing red on the right, so that the other half can be added in the future. Ignore Bennett White in this, please. Oh, there my name, Jim Lightford. I'm with the Southville team. We're at the Lawrence County Sheriff's Office, the Detention Center in Walnut Ridge, Arkansas, this spring of 2018, and we're getting ready to open this facility. We're going to take inside with you just a moment, look at the main areas of what makes up a detention facility in the Sheriff's Office, the lobby area, the sheriff's area, jail support area, and the processing area, and the jail housing. Appreciate it. I'm going to turn it back to Andy before I can down if you have any questions.
Thanks, Jimmy. Very brief closing, my pardon. We've done over 15,000 beds, as I said, in five southern states. We have recently been contacted by a county in the state of Montana to go, come to one of their jails. They contacted us because of our reputation. They contacted us because of the number of beds we've built, and we've never been over budget once, and we intend never to be over budget. When I talk about a budget, a typical number you're going to receive from an architectural firm is a, I'm going to call it a guest quote. It's not an accurate number. It's a guest quote. We don't do that. We're going to give you a hard number for your jail at the very beginning of this process. That number will never, ever, not once exceed it. We either hit it, or we're under a savings stay with the county. And I think that is a big difference between our organization and anybody else, regardless of how. I'm going to steal some of Jim's thunder. He does an analogy sometimes about heart surgery. If you're going to have heart surgery, you want a team that's worked together for a long time. Heart surgery is a specialty. We are not a team as far as jails, we're a team that worked together for 22 years, have done a lot of county jails, again, nothing else. And with that, we welcome any questions you might have. And I got a couple, a comment about, Jim just brought up earlier about, about finances. About six months ago, I can't recall which county it is, but I can find it in my notes, they're doing a USDA loan, I think for three years, and I believe it's either three and a half or four and a half quarters. If you can put up, with working with the federal government, they are USDA, USDA, is loaning, loaning money for some pocket. So I think Jim might have another comment or two more than I do about financing. So please, ask any question, we'd love to.
What was the cost of the Lawrence County jail, you know, building issue?
It was finished for a little under eight. In fact, the budget we put together was right at eight, and I think it was about $300,000, $400,000 under budget when it was finished.
How many beds was that?
That's 100 beds.
100 beds. Did that have a justice center, or was it just?
No, it was just a jail. Now, it did have what they called a multi-use first appearance arraignment room, but it's not a courtroom. It's just someplace where you can first appearances. No, it was just a jail, now, it did have what they called a multi-use, uh, first appearance arraignment room, but it's not a courtroom, it's just some place where you can do first appearances.
And we had done another hundred bed jail, and the cost with that was about seven point eight, seven point nine, eight or eight, eight point one, I think, Jim, I believe it was around there. So those two women are jails, and they're consistent in cost.